I am proud to present. And as soon as it, the screen clears, actually what I'm gonna do is rather than you see her on the screen, I'm gonna shift over to the Skype show, which is here, uh, there. And um, it's coming in live, but there's, there's the Skype version of her and I'm putting that in position right here. And um, and I'm going to uh, put in, I'm gonna mute myself, yeah, 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 mute it myself. And now, I'm going to click on the screen there and here we are and I'm, oh yeah, here we are. And I'm going to turn this back over. There, there she is. Naili Maxson, Naili, thank you, welcome to Zeni sixty-two live. How are you?
Thank you for having me.
Oh, thank you for being here and being patient with the text, sorry for the delay folks, we had a little bit of a hiccup in terms of uh, the setup, but you know, long time listeners know that happens. Um, so, this is gonna wrap up, eh, real quick in a second, but Naili, while people are coming in, talk to me about, tell people about who you are and why you're running.
Yeah, thank you, so thanks for bringing me on. I know you and I have been talking about doing this for a couple months now, so I'm glad it's finally happening. Um, so my name's Naili and I uh, am all about community, I grew up in a family where, you know, my mom was a public school teacher and my biological dad was an organizer from Mexico who immigrated here and then my mom remarried to um, a gentleman who is another community active organizer, so I, you know, I come from a, a long, tight-knit community of, of folks who care about giving back. And that's the, the stew I was steeped in growing up. So um, I went into public interest law and uh, yeah, spent a lot of time uh, working with not-for-profit organizations, I currently run a not-for-profit organization, but I do have a good amount of experience working in government, uh, worked for Congresswoman and for a state senator and then here in the District Four Council Office. And I'm so excited to be running, um, and I'm really excited by uh, the energy that I'm feeling from the community, we just crossed the hundred volunteer mark.
Congratulations.
Which was a goal to, to recruit and energize a hundred volunteers and we're moving, it's, it's really exciting. So I have some, three goals around uh, building our local economy more equitably, which is something I know we're gonna talk about tonight. And um, increasing access to housing at all levels here in our city. Um, and finally, re-envisioning what community safety looks like. And building as much community input into that process, whether it be um, through policing or through uh, you know, more resilient communities who are more connected with one another, um, or about fire prevention. So um, I'm excited to dig into the issues with you tonight and learn a lot, cause I know you are expert on all things uh, related to our local sports teams here and I just saw uh, tomorrow night we're having a forum at uh, the Diamond Library. Uh, and it's unfortunately at the same time as the, the A's game.
Oh no!
Yeah, it's really sad, so my family's all gonna go and, and watch it and give me live text updates of what's going on. And I have, I have a family member here.
Yes!
The bat.
The cute, the cute one. How you doing, fella?
This is post-bat look.
Yeah, post-bat. Like I said. Yeah, he's, tell him, uh, introduce him, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so this is, this is Lincoln, Lincoln Melrose. Uh, he's about to be two in about a week.
Hey Lincoln.
You say hi?
Hey Lincoln, how you doing? Lincoln's the show stealer.
He is.
He looks, he actually, he actually resembles Derek Carr if he were two years old.
Yeah, I see it, I see it.
Lincoln!
He is, uh, he's showing you outwards. Um, he and his older brother, big local sports fans. Seriously into baseball and football, a lot of tackling happens around here. Um, so I'm glad to be talking about all this with you tonight.
Wow, hey, so tell my viewers, um, what, I mean, before we talk about economic development, sports of the Raiders and everything, uh, what, how have you found the campaign and uh, what do you think about the electorate? What are you feeling, what's going on in the minds of the Oakland electorate from your perspective?
Yeah, that's a great question.
You've knocked on a lot, you've knocked on a lot of doors, yeah.
A lot of doors and um, you know, it's, it's really interesting because um, this is, this is a beautiful moment in, in our history. There's a lot of, a lot of dark clouds, but I see a lot of silver lightnings. And I think so much of what's happening at the national scale, it's, it's doing a lot of things, I mean, one, it's activating people in a way that they have uh, in some cases, never been activated, or in other cases, you know, not since the, you know, nineteen sixty-eight have, have they been this activated. Last year, I was political director at East Bay Young Dems and we had people coming to our meetings in January of last year who said, "I have never come to anything political in my life" and after this election, I know I have to be involved. And similarly, I was, I was up at a, um, a meeting, it was a, it was actually a protest that grandparents pulled together in Montclair Park, this was maybe three or four months ago, um, around the immigrant detention of children. And I think seeing a protest led by uh, you know, older folks living in Montclair and Piedmont Pines and in Piedmont, coming together in a public park with signs and speakers and you know, and a little uh, you know, loudspeaker and and speaking with a lot of passion and a lot of fire and crying. Um, I think that's the type of public engagement and energy that can transform a community. And, and it's happening at a national scale, people are showing up in numbers and I think that's, that's the type of energy that I'm uh, really, you know, excited about in, in Oakland and I think it's that type of engagement um, that is gonna lead to finally tackling some of these longstanding issues that we've been seeing for a long, long time. Um, and I think some of that is, is talking about what economic development can look like. And, and how we can engage small business community leaders and local entrepreneurs and people who run uh, not-for-profits and and bringing them into the fold and making them part of the way that we solve problems here. Um, so that's, that's something that I'm really excited by and I think it starts in how you run a campaign and we've run a very grassroots people-powered campaign.
Okay, so let's switch to economic development sports and let me ask you a really easy question. What do you think about a ballpark for the athletics and where do you think it should be, Howard Terminal or the Coliseum?
I'm, I'm really excited about, about both locations, um, and I know we're in ENAs on both, exclusive association agreements on both. He wants me to read a, a book right now, that's what he's talking about, read about a horse. Yeah, it's a horse. Um, so, yeah, so I think, I think both are great locations. Yes, I know, I know. Um, and to me, I think either one would be tremendous, if he wants to read a book. Says, you wanna, actually come say hi.
Hey, tell him, tell him horses represent the Denver Broncos, we want, we want pirates. Hey, how are you?
My husband, Andrew.
How you doing? Hey, go Dub, Dub Nation, right? Yeah, hey, so what about, yeah, say, so what do you think about the Warriors, you're a Dub, you're, are you a season ticket holder?
I wish, no. We make it to a few games when we can.
Yeah, what do you think about the Warriors leaving uh, Oakland, both of you, yeah?
It's so painful.
I think it's unfortunate, it's uh, it's sad timing. Um, I've been a fan for a long time, even growing up in San Francisco, I've been a fan for a long time and uh, it's hard to see them, it's across the bay, but it's hard to see them go. Uh, that feels a very Oakland team uh, for so long and they've made a choice to move, unfortunately.
Do you, do you sense that there's a um, a kind of a, uh, ideological divide in terms of what Oakland should be? You know, and, and as a council member, how do you tap into that, what is it, is it hard to figure out who's thinking what? Who is your, who is the District Four constituency now, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a beautiful constituency because
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
After, after redistricting, Glendale went over to District Five and Maxwell Park went to District Six and it cut down further into
Hey, nice to meet you, thanks, see ya.
Bye.
See ya.
It cut, it cut down, it cut into a part, part uh, East Oakland, uh, which is the part of the district that I live in. We used to rent in Laurel and then about three and a half years ago, we um, purchased our, our first home here in the Fairfax Melrose neighborhood. And, you know, I think part of what makes it so beautiful is that it is uh, a more of a cross-section socio-economically after that redistricting to, um, took place. And um, you know, what, what I've always found is it's really incredible how many of our issues are shared. You know, we, yes, there is certainly more legal dumping in some parts of the city and there's certainly more homelessness in certain parts of the city. Um, and I think there is, of course, you know, environmental justice issues and issues around um, you know, equitable distribution of services and, and resources. However, most people are struggling with the same fundamental issues of how can I consistently get a response from the city when I reach out to them? How can I walk, have a walkable neighborhood where I can walk to get healthy food and uh, any kind of, you know, go to a bank, walk to get my services that I need in my community, right here without getting in my car? Every neighborhood's talking about that right now. And everyone wants to see more vibrant commercial business districts, I'm in every part of District Four. And so I, I think, yes, people are certainly impacted by the housing crisis and homelessness in ways that we have not ever seen before, but the real vision that I'm hearing from community members is a neighborhood, they wanna live in a neighborhood where they can feel safe, where they can walk, where they don't have to worry about tripping in on the, on our sidewalks and um, you know, dipping in the potholes if they decide to ride their bike. Um, they wanna live in the kind of community that is consistent and safe and reliable and resilient where they, they are connected to their neighbors and that's irrespective of, of area, irrespective of socioeconomic level. And I think the more we can focus on the parts of that vision that unite us, the stronger and more connected we'll be and the better we can advocate uh, for the needs that we have as a city to say we wanna see more support for our local business districts. And uh, we wanna see more emphasis on neighborhood economic development and maybe a little less emphasis on and focus on downtown, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of energy and staff time and resources on downtown oriented development and I think now is a good time to look at neighborhood business district development and looking at how we can build an opportunity and build in uh, more capacity for local jobs that way. So, so that's what, that's what I'm hearing from people in terms of the vision for Oakland and that's my vision and and that's something I think we need to be focusing on is all the ways in which our, our values and our visions overlap.
I'm actually tweeting this out as we go because I realized there's actually two live streams, there's one that did not start of you, the original one, so I'm tweeting this one out real quick. And while I do that, let me ask you, are you, do you find that people ask you about uh, sports-related issues or there, there, is their mindset, uh, is their mindset on that or what, what do they, what do they talk about most when you go out on the campaign trail? Um, what's on their mind for the most part, uh, when you go and you talk to people?
Yeah, number one is housing, number one, every time. We do a lot of uh, neighborhood house parties and I knock on doors every day. And number one is consistently housing. Um, and you know, it's, it impacts people in different ways, but it, it impacts everyone. Um, and so I think, you know, either you're personally concerned about where you're gonna live and whether you have housing um, in the, in the future, if you're a renter especially, people don't feel like they have permanent reliable housing that can be, uh, within their, their means. If you are a homeowner, I think a lot of, especially elderly folks are living on social security and retirement, maybe it's some retirement if they're, if they're lucky, and are concerned about um, you know, the parcel taxes coming up, people talk about that quite a bit and they also talk about, you know, the cost of living is increasing so dramatically that all of my equity is in my home that I bought a long, long time ago and so they feel a lot of pressure to sell their home and, and move far away, but if they do that, they're, that's, that's ripping apart the fabric of this, this intergenerational fabric that makes communities resilient and that um, can provide affordable childcare because it's provided by grandma. Those, those are the types of housing issues that I'm, I'm every day. Um, consistently, number one uh, issue that comes up at house parties and in our cross-neighborhood community meetings we're holding is homelessness. I mean, I know you, that, when we first hopped on, on, uh, online, but it really is something that people feel is um, immoral and untenable and people are really hungry to see a vision and a solution that is gonna tackle it in a meaningful way.
Yeah, it's gotten so bad, I mean, I, I, I've, I've been in Oakland since April eighth of seventy-four and the pictures I get back, oh my god, it's horrible, I mean, and with that, you know, where, where is the mindset to do public projects? And I, and that's where it leads, not just uh, sports, but conventions and everything else. Where is our mindset to spend the dollars that create low-skill but well-paying jobs that help curb the problem, is it there in your opinion or am I on the wrong track or should be more tech, what do you think? Yes, as you're running.
No, I, I think you're, I think you're totally on the right track, I am one hundred percent with you, we absolutely need to be creating more jobs. And um, one of the ways that, that I work on that in my daily life is through the Alliance for Community Development, which is an eighteen-year-old uh, not-for-profit organization that I run, I used to be on the board and two years ago transitioned into its executive director, CEO role. Um, but the way we, we talk about it is in terms of uh, small business development and um, growth through that, that locally generated job creation. And I see what you're describing as very much in line with that. Um, what, what I would like to see is more community-owned opportunities so that there isn't some, you know, one individual or one large uh, company that's based elsewhere earning a lot of revenue from any given project, but that as much as possible, the projects that are generating a lot of wealth and are creating a lot of jobs are owned by people here in Oakland. And I think that's, that's where I wanna see um, uh, that, that wealth building and keep those dollars in our local economy. So, you know, as much as possible pursuing a path forward where if we do uh, do some work around a convention center, look at who is going to be in, in ownership roles um, with new large-scale projects. And where is the wealth that that generates going to, is it gonna come back into our local economy or is it going to be extracted and sent elsewhere? So those, those are the types of questions that I ask even on, on big projects, but you gotta, you gotta start small and um, most of, of our local economic growth and most of our job creation does come from small local businesses where that wealth is, is regenerated back into our economy.
Uh, a number of council members have an idea that uh, some of them like Dan Calb think the Coliseum should be torn down. Others believe that the Coliseum and the Oracle Arena should be retained. Where do you stand on the future of the Coliseum?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm interested in seeing what some prospective uses could be for the existing building. Um, I really liked the idea I heard of uh, potentially recruiting a WNBA team. You know, I, I recently, I'm sure you saw Steph Curry's uh, piece that he wrote about, you know, working with uh, girls' basketball teams. And wanting to invest in that and get more attention on uh, you know, building talent and industry around women's basketball. I think, you know, it's kind of odd to me that we, we still don't see the same type of um, economic growth around women's sports teams and I, I don't see any real biological reason for that. They're just as talented and entertaining and in some ways, the way that they play is more creative and nimble.
I have some, I have some bad news Naili. Outside of Oakland, women's sports and economic development is much better, much better along, like here in Atlanta or Las Vegas. The problem, it really is in the Bay Area unbelievably. Uh, you know, I don't wanna go on a rant about this because I would take away from the fact that this is your time, but I just wanna just throw that in there, we have some work to do, shockingly.
We do, we do, so I'm, I'm interested in that potential, um, but I do really wanna see what the proposals are coming out of uh, either through these negotiating, um, uh, you know, the negotiating process with the Oakland A's. Or if, if they think forward with Howard Terminal, I'm, I'm very interested to see who comes forward with some, some ideas about either using the existing structure or tearing it down and, and building another structure, but again, my, the way that I think is I always ask the questions of who's gonna be um, you know, generating profit and where would that profit go, into whose hands would that profit fall into? And how can we recapture as much of that as possible and put it back into our local economy?
Hey folks, with Naili Maxson, she's running for Oakland City Council, District Four. If you have a question, you can just type it in the chat area here, I know it's starting to ramp up because we're a little, we started a little earlier than we usually do and so some of our people have this sort of DNA where it's, and he goes like, "Here", but this runs forever and people are gonna be asking about it afterward onward through the fog. Um, that's one of my favorite sayings, doesn't mean we're actually in a fog, but the whole point is, is just the way that I am. Hey, so uh, what do you think about the Raiders? Should we sue the Raiders, let them go to Las Vegas as they're going? Uh, think about, what, what, how should we think about the National Football League in your view?
I, you know, if elected, I would be very interested in digging all, in, into all of the documents um, that are, you know, I'm, I'm trained as an attorney. Um, and so I would wanna dig into all of the potential legal grounds for suits um, before, you know, deciding whether or not I, I think we should sue, I think I would really need to get into the weeds on that. And, you know, like I say this all the time, but I love getting into the weeds on things. But I would just need to allocate some, some, a good chunk of hours into digging into all the, all the nitty-gritty. Um, I'm open to the potential of a suit, I think it really, to me, comes down to, you know, is it in fact, in, were they acting in good faith? And
No!
Well, if we can demonstrate that, then we have a case. Um, and so I think it just comes down to finding what the evidence would be of, of acting in bad faith.
I think in fairness, since I broke this story, uh, it turned out the Oakland City Council in closed section actually voted to, not, not a lot of people know this, a lot of reporters really screw this up, so you're not, you're among the many who don't know this Naili. It's not a, okay, I just put this out there today by the way too, because I got confirmation, something I supined. But uh, the Oakland City Council gave the city attorney the right to sue. And I talked to Jim Quinn today, who's heading the, the group of lawyers that are essentially paying for the lawsuit. And he said, um, on the record, uh, we're making progress, that's as much as I can tell you. Um, but that's where we are right now, so that's as of today, basically, the city attorney can pull the trigger at any time. So it's
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah, that's
To me, that indicates that they, they may have from some amount of, of sufficient evidence that would be if they're getting the okay, um, I wish I would really want to dig into those documents.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just tell you out of fairness, just so we have a um, discussion, so it's not, you know, unfair to you. Um, what happened, to make it really blankly easy, is that the Raiders started negotiating on a Las Vegas move as far back as two thousand fourteen, having secret meetings. All the time since Mark Davis took over the Raiders on October eighth of, of two thousand eleven, uh, the Raiders always said, Mr. Davis always said, "We're gonna build a stadium in Oakland", but they've never provided an artist rendition of what they still want the stadium at the Coliseum to look like. They've talked with San Antonio, Carson, um, and Las Vegas. And with Oakland, they just, one year dealt with us in what seemed to be good faith, but even Commissioner Goodell acknowledged that the Raiders are partly to blame for not having a stadium in Oakland. And that's the short version of it, so, that's what happened. Um, oh, volume, what happened to the volume there?
Oh, sorry.
There it is. Okay, you were saying? You muted yourself! No, you, you were saying?
Yeah, it's, it's really hard, I mean, I, I um, it's, it's really challenging because I, I think at this point, we're doing a lot of post, uh, you know, post-decision analysis and I um, I do try as much as possible to invest my time and energy and attention into uh, you know, issues where I can have an impact. And so when I look at the Oakland A's, I think I can have an impact there. Um, and when I look at what's happened with the Warriors and what's happened with the Raiders, um, I do feel like I try to just measure the amount of, of energy and frustration that, that I'm sending, sending forward into that direction because um, I think we can learn from it. But uh, do try as much as possible to just keep looking forward and think about how we can reward the Oakland A's for commitment that they're showing to us.
Yes.
Give some positive reinforcement and then, you know, other sports teams, I mean, this is they're, you know, they're gonna be decades ahead of sports teams looking at cities that they wanna come and uh, and plant themselves in. And I think as much as possible establishing ourselves as fantastic partners through our work with the Oakland A's and making it clear to teams who are looking to us in the future, wow, that went really well, did you see how they engaged in that process with the Oakland A's? Did you see how they, you know, connected them with uh, you know, local small businesses that then acted as their vendors and they established a model for greater community partnership, like I think those, those are the ways that I wanna engage in that process so that we have more doors opening in the future with uh, teams that really deserve to be here.
Hey, I wanna welcome uh, T. Chubb who says, uh, "This is our last year playing at Oracle, keep thinking we have an additional year thanks." Hey, do you have a question for um, Naili Maxson, who's running for Oakland D4 and as you're considering that question and others who are, who are coming in, here's another one I have for you, related to that. Uh, why we have a lousy convention space? Why don't we have enough conventions and hotels in Oakland? And what as council member do you think we should do about it, if anything?
Yeah, and I, you know, it's interesting, I uh, I used to do this fellowship program called the Coro Program.
Yeah, yeah, I remember the core, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, one of my projects that I worked on as a Coro Fellow was with a union, uh, Local Five Ten Sign and Display. And uh, working on that project, I got to know a lot of Bay Area convention center spaces and uh, the, the internal teams at a lot of those spaces. And there is a, a huge network here in the Bay Area. Um, and, you know, you're, you're totally right, Oakland's convention center just does not measure up to a lot of what people are doing in neighboring cities and as a result, we're not seeing that um, economic investment coming, coming into our city. Um, each of those conferences that are held result in hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue. And that's, that's incredibly valuable, I mean, I've, I've been, I've been there when they've had, he's back.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say, he'd be great for Comic-Con. We need Comic-Con in Oakland, hey, what do you think about Comic-Con, the fella? I mean, I, you know, I just, that's the kind of, you know?
More than just the traditional tech in Comic-Con, uh, you know, we, we really like uh, the drag queen culture, uh, you know, I have a lot of a lot of my community, a lot of the people I grew up with were all, you know, in the LGBTQ and, and drag community and they have huge drag festivals. And I think we need to be the kind of place that says, "We are inclusive of all of the creative, beautiful, original, uh, you know, communities that are out there that are looking for a welcoming place." And Oakland is a welcoming place.
Oh yeah. And I only mentioned Comic-Con because it, it requires a huge convention space. Uh, check your volume by the way. I think, oh, you got it, okay, cool, yeah. Uh, uh, and then Chubb says, "That was another question I had, my family wanted to plan a trip from DC to Oakland, but wasn't sure about the hotels around the Coliseum." Uh, oh, poor fella, how's he doing? Uh, he wants to be like, keep bringing back, I mean, it's like, it'd be, you know, he's a star of the show. He, the, the, the star wants his chair. He's, 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 he's an actor, he's yelling at the, he's yelling. He's like, "Hey, look, come on, put me back where I belong, I belong to be on camera", I agree with him.
He's, he's having a hard time, he's, it's bedtime coming up, so I actually, I should probably give it just another five minutes and I should run into bedtime stuff, unfortunately.
Right, should Oakland have a sports industry or do people care about sports in Oakland anymore?
Absolutely, yes, we need to have a sports industry, one thousand percent. That is, that's our community, that's our culture, that's our history. So many brilliant, uh, incredibly inspiring athletes come from Oakland, I mean, look at what Marshall Lynch has done, coming back and creating Beast Mode and people, people in, people who have been challenging their bodies and demonstrating the capacity of, of in spirit, not just physically. The capacity of of in spirit, not just physically but emotionally and. Uh in terms of their vision for what they can create have been coming from Oakland for decades. That's that's our history and I think that it's intrinsically connected with uh athleticism and. In taking a challenge and taking difficulty and turning it into something even more positive and beautiful. Um and so that's that's what I've always found. I've always been uh an athlete. I um. Well, I did a lot of dorky sports, so I.
Wait, 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 wait. What do you consider dorky? This is gonna be good.
I was on the girls golf team in high school. So basically, my my uh.
What was your what was your score in golf? Were you Tiger Woods level?
No. It is it is not that difficult to be on the girls golf team. There there aren't a lot of girls who play golf, so pretty much everybody gets on the team. Um but I loved it. It was it was really fun and then I was a rower. Um so my my dad, when I was in like third grade or something, he read an article.
So was my girlfriend Cal, she wrote, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But basically, they they heard that there are ways to get scholarships to go to college if you do certain sports if you're a girl. And like golf was one of them, so they had me in golf lessons when I was in like fourth grade. Um yes, I was the only. Little mixed race girl on the golf course. It was it was a beautiful thing, though, to have like all these like older white gentlemen and me who, you know. Half Mexican girl with my golf clubs out there. Um but uh and then played golf for a while and then I joined crew. They had a club that did like scholarships for kids that went to public school. So I was a rower, actually went to junior nationals.
Wow, congratulations.
Silver medal, yeah. We were undefeated all season my senior year and I was the ca- I was the captain of our team. And we finally we lost at nationals uh just by to one vote, so we got a silver medal. And then I I ran a marathon, uh dual, I so I've always been very into like. The beauty of a challenge and the beauty of seeing people play as a team together and conquering. Something that you think is impossible is incredibly inspiring and it translates into not just. Seeing young people take on physical challenges, but young people take on things that they don't. They don't know with certainty that they can accomplish it, but they believe and it's that belief and hope that that inspires them.
Real quick, this reminds me, sports is more than just the Coliseum. It's also rowing and other. Activities in Oakland. Do you feel that we are sufficiently fortified in that area or is there something we're not doing that we can do?
Yeah, there's absolutely more that we can be doing there. Um you know. It's interesting because I've I've been doing just like tours of schools and you know, now that my kids are getting a little bit older, I go and look at schools all the time and. Um there is more and more data uh that shows uh young people need opportunities. To be out and uh connecting with their physical bodies. I think we've we've kind of. Taken a a long terrible turn in the direction of of making our young people sit still. For far too long, thinking that that's gonna be better for them in the long run, but. More and more, the evidence is showing that we need to be providing more spaces for um. Not just young people, but even for adults to be outside and to be moving their bodies and to be. Uh connecting with their community outside and you know, there are a lot of a lot of ways that I'd like to see that happen, but just to name a couple. Um I would like to see more access, public access for the boathouse. Um as I said, you know, I was a public school student who got to access that environment and it was beautiful and not enough. Uh lower income people get to experience that beauty. Um I would also like to see more of the outdoor public uh workout equipment. Available in our in our parks and walking Miller Park and Leona Canyon and uh. All all the parks in our city, but also around Lake Merritt to have spaces where you can, you know, and and there are. For profit companies that we can partner with who uh can help as a and. Basically provide that equipment for us at a very reduced cost, but places where. Having a physical space and and. Exercising your physical body should not be exclusively of any people who I mean, it should be available for everyone.
Oh, hey, I gotta ask you before you go. Clay Thompson. Folks, for those of you who are are seeing Nelly for the first time, she has a photograph with her and Clay Thompson. I was gonna pop up here, but she can't see it from her point of view. Uh how did Clay Thompson come to be at your uh table in Montclair? What the heck was that?
Purely coincidental, um it really was. I just happened to be, I just actually had gotten those T-shirts. And I was sitting with my campaign manager. I was actually making phone calls. I was doing some some fundraising phone calls at a at a restaurant. And I saw him get out of his car and go inside another restaurant and I happened to be outside, so I just approached him. And he was really nice and I told him I'm running for Oakland City Council. I'd love to take a picture with you and um it was really. And uh he was really nice, eh but it was not an endorsement. I'm I'm I don't think that that was the endorsement at all.
Oh, I mean, I looked at it because he could have said no. I mean, the fact that he said, yeah, was uh to me that. Because of his image, that was that was enough right there. Congratulations. So I thought that was very huge.
Yeah, I did. I was very uh you know, uh upfront about the fact that I was running. He knew I was running before. Took a picture, so that is true, but um but I did not explicitly ask him for endorsement. I was just really happy to see him. I I never met him in person before. It was awesome.
Hey, if people wanna find out more about your campaign, how can they do that?
Yes, uh so my website is nyeliforOakland.com. It's N A Y E L I F O R. Oakland dot com um and uh I would love to connect with anybody who who wants to reach out and ask questions. I I believe in being accessible and responsive, so I'm just gonna give my my phone number if anybody has questions. Is five one oh three four two nine three three one. Um so please don't hesitate to call me. Or you can even send a text message to that number and I I welcome any any questions or thoughts people want here.
Oh, and uh what's his name again?
This is Lincoln.
Lincoln, hey, Lincoln. Lincoln, you got fans. You're on YouTube. How you doing, fella? There you got a smile, he's smiling. Ah, hey, Lincoln.
Thank you for being so uh welcoming.
Oh, this is great, absolutely.
I really appreciate it.
Oh, no, he's fantastic. This is a lot of fun, too, and you know, this is this, I'm I'm glad you're you're on. This is fantastic and I know. You gotta put the little one to bed. Hey, Lincoln, uh Lincoln, you're a continental. How's that? That means you're smooth, okay? Yeah, especially as I just came up with it. I was like, what did I just say? Hey, Lincoln, uh we'll see you. Lincoln, look at look at a photograph with Derek Carr and then. I'm gonna send us, hey, Derek, you have a you have a doppelganger at two.
Side by side. Thank you, thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it and I'd love to have more conversations with you. Every time we speak, I really enjoy our conversations.
You got it, definitely. On on me, absolutely, absolutely. Hey, thanks a lot. Good night, Lincoln.
Have a good rest of your show.
Thanks, thank you. You guys, okay, cool, all right. Well, folks, see ya. Well, folks, that was uh Nelly Maxon and uh Lincoln and uh that was fantastic. She is running for. Uh Oakland City Council District Four, uh and what I'm going to do is as she's running for. As that's this segment was about her, I'm going to close this segment off. And start a new segment um and then pick up where we left off just so that there's a demarcation so that uh this gets uploaded. And uh there's no confusion with me talking an extra, you know, X number of minutes. But uh for those of you who are wondering, this is not the first District Four candidate uh had on. I had Joseph Tanyos. And then Charlie McKelson will be on Friday night at eight o'clock. Uh and I'm I've extended invitations to a number of people running for office. Uh some have not gotten back. I'm gonna. Reissue those invitations. Uh to date, I've had on Said Kamarus is running for mayor. Tell you about just this year alone, okay? I've had a number of people running for office on this channel. Um either for static video livestream over the years, but uh this livestream process is about a over a year and a half old. But I digress. I've had Said Kamarus is running for mayor on this year. Uh Marshawn Tatmon, who's also running for mayor of Oakland, Cat Brooks, who's running for mayor of Oakland. Uh Jesse A. Smith, uh uh Jesse Smith, who's running for mayor of Oakland. And uh had on, I mentioned Joseph Tanyos uh as well as um and I mentioned um. One other person uh who uh oh, I had Rebecca Capel on who's not running, but she at the time was thinking of running for mayor, right? Um Nancy Sidebotham has been on and she's gonna be on again. So um that gives a a range of people and of course I got Charlie McKelson coming up. And uh I'm just casting the net and whoever comes on is given a a. Welcome platform to present themselves free form, as you can tell. So that's it. So I will be back in a few seconds. Stay tuned. Please, if you have not done so before, subscribe to Zenny sixty-two on YouTube. Thank you.